Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 80th organizational meeting of Nehal County. So the calling this meeting to order at 8:30 a.m. on October 22, 2024, and our first order of business is looking to adopt the agenda for today's organizational meeting. Counselor McGee?
I move to adopt the organizational meeting agenda as presented.
Okay, is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. The second bit of business for today's meeting are voting procedures as per the RFD and the package, procedure utilized by Nehal County. If there is more than one council nominated for the Reeve or deputy Reeve positions, a motion needs to be made to approve the use of secret ballot as per the Municipal Government Act. Afterwards, we'll need a motion to destroy the ballots at the end of the meeting as well. So I'd ask if there's any concerns with the outlined voting message or voting methods and use of secret ballot. If not, I'd be looking for motions to confirm that process. Counselor Christie?
So moved.
Moving if there is more than one council nominated, we utilize secret ballot. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Is carried unanimously. And looking for somebody to make a motion to destroy the ballots at the end of the meeting, if needed. Counselor Cunningham?
I'll move to destroy all the ballots at the end of the meeting.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. And the last bit of organization or administrivia for today, the establishment of the municipal office. The Municipal Government Act has outlined that the place of business for the municipality be known. We've adopted doing this motion just so that it was there for easy reference. So looking for a motion to confirm that council established the municipal office at 1600 Second Street Northeast, Three Hills, Alberta. Counselor Whitstock?
Okay, I would move the council establish 1600 Second Street Northeast, Three Hills, Alberta as the county's municipal office. Better than moving it.
Sir, there any discussion on relocating this building? All those in favor? Is carried unanimously, thank you. My last bit of my last role as chair is to oversee the election of Reeve. So at this point in time, I'm going to ask for nominations for the election of Reeve. I'll call for nominations three times. Afterwards, look for a motion to cease nominations. Counselor Whitstock?
I would nominate Counselor King for the position of Reeve.
Counselor King, do you accept that nomination?
I would, yes.
Thank you. I'll call again. Are there any other nominations for the position of Reeve? Counselor Cunningham?
I would like to nominate Counselor McGee for the position of Reeve.
Counselor McGee, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call last time. Are there any other nominations for the position of Reeve? Okay, seeing none? I would ask for I would ask for a motion for nominations to cease. Counselor Whitstock?
Move nominations cease.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? It's carried unanimously.
Counselor Phobes, can you directly text me what your decision is?
After looking at the at the votes, the council has elected Counselor King as Reeve for the upcoming year.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Congratulations, Reeve King. At this point, we will administer the oath of office. The oath of office.
This is what I need to read?
Yeah.
Okay. I, Kenneth King, do swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability execute according to law the office of Reeve for Nehal County for a term of one year to expire at the 2025 organizational meeting. So help me God. Can I see some for writing? Well, thank you for that. I appreciate confidence expressed to me by council. As I said, I will continue to do my best, and if at any time you have a problem with the direction I'm going or with what's happening, you know that you're supposed to come and talk to me and straighten me out, please, please do that. No, I'm serious. Like, I don't claim to be all-knowing about how this job is supposed to work, so. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda, I guess I should take over this at this point, Mr. Hoven?
At this point in time, I get to turn the chairmanship of the meeting over to you, Reeve King.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be the election of Deputy Reeve. So I will call for nominations three times for the position of Deputy Reeve, and then so first call for nominations for position of Deputy Reeve. Counselor Christie?
I'd nominate Fay McGee.
Counselor McGee, will you accept that nomination?
Yes, I'd be honored to. Thank you.
Second call for any other nominations for the position of Deputy Reeve, Counselor McGee.
I'd like to nominate Wade Christie.
Counselor Christie, will you accept that nomination?
I'm going to pass because I have enough on my plate. I'll pass, thank you.
All right. Third and final call for any other nominations for the position of Deputy Reeve. Counselor Penner?
I'll nominate Jerry Whitstock.
Counselor Whitstock, will you accept that nomination?
Well, let's have an election, I guess.
Okay, so Counselor Whitstock is willing to accept that nomination, so we have two or two counselors nominated for the position of Deputy Reeve. Is there a motion to cease nominations? Counselor Penner?
I'd make that motion to cease nominations.
Okay, so we have a motion to declare nominations as closed. Any discussion to that motion? If not, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. So at this point in time, we will vote.
We've tabulated the results, and our deputy Reeve is Counselor McGee.
Congratulations. So at this point, I guess the next process would be to administer the oath of office to the deputy Reeve. Do you want a suitcase?
I, Fay McGee, do swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to do the best of my ability execute according to law the office of Deputy Reeve for Nehal County for a term of one year to expire at the 2025 organizational meeting.
Once again, congratulations, Deputy Reeve McGee. I have to get used to calling you that.
Thank you. It's an honor. I really appreciate it.
The Jerry's still packing his suitcase. The next item of business is seating arrangements, and this, of course, is Ms. Vanderkool's favorite time of the year. So seating arrangements for council are determined by drawing a number. The seating chart is in our package, which indicates which number applies to which seat. And so the order of drawing is Division One, which we already know where she is sitting, and then following Division Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. Mr. Hoven, go ahead.
Just a procedural question, Mr. Reeve, and that's if Counselor Phobes would be okay with a member of administration drawing by proxy for her?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so when Counselor Phobes' turn comes, then someone from administration will draw for her.
I'm one.
Okay, so basically, one, two, three, four, and five. You don't have to move. Oh, you're allowed to take your chair, too. Yes. Not only the contents of the drawer.
Carrie, you got moved to position number four next to Mr. Christie.
Jerry's taking his chair. You can count on that.
I need two trips. I got a lot of stuff.
Two trips. Two trips. Counselor Phobes, just for your information, you ended up with seat number four, so you're in where Counselor Cunningham was. That's your once-a-year opportunity to dust out your desk drawer and resort your inventory. I think I'll give just another minute for everyone to get settled in their new seats.
That's a good idea.
Counselor Christie needs a little extra time. Give you some more room. You want to just set it maybe to the side and we'll finish that at our first recess? You should have maybe taken a 10-minute one. Okay, if we're sort of ready to move on in our agenda on the organizational meeting, the next item of business would be the regular council meeting dates for the calendar year of 2025. And, Mr. Hogan, this is yours, I believe, so if you would like to go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So every organizational meeting, council has a motion to come forward that dictates its normal meeting times. This, of course, serves as the advertisement of those days officially. What we're proposing is that council continue the second, fourth Tuesday of each month. That has traditionally been Neale County's schedule. There are some exceptions to that list, as there are every year. We are proposing that council looked at one meeting in July and one in August, and that those be held the same week as MPC, is how we've done the draft schedule now. Looking at November, since the 11th, so Tuesday falls on a... Sorry, since November 11th, which is a holiday, falls on a Tuesday, we're recommending that we bump that council to Wednesday, November 12th. We did consider the 10th, but we felt it would be... There might be a number of individuals that turn that into a longer weekend, both on council and staff. Might be better just to have it on the Wednesday. Looking at having one meeting in December, as has been our practice, and looking at scheduling the organizational meeting for Tuesday, October 28th. So regarding the organizational meeting, the Municipal Government Act does outline a timeframe within which that has to happen. So we're proposing that date. Of course, this upcoming election, there are some... We're proposing that date for now. We'll have to see closer to that what is actually going to occur on the election date. As right now, the federal election and the municipal one here in Alberta falls on the same day. That being said, we have heard from Municipal Affairs that the minister does have the power to move the municipal election date if required. So we're certain that they're not going to actually fall on the same date. But we are recommending that Tuesday, October 28th, be the organizational meeting. If those schedules work with council, then we'd be looking for a motion that council approved the scheduling of the 2025 organizational meeting for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and hold all regular council meeting dates on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, with the exceptions of July... July, one meeting on July 22nd; August, one meeting on August 26th; November, holding the meeting on November 12th to replace the November 11th meeting, and having one meeting in December.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any discussion or question, comment regarding the 2025 regular council meeting dates? Counselor Penner?
November 6th is down for an MPC meeting. There's two in November. Is that because they have a convention or something in October?
Thank you for that question. October, because of the election and the organizational meeting, we just had to push that back just to give time for orientation.
Okay, so you didn't want to have it beforehand. It's fine.
No, yeah. Because your one in September is the September 25th, which is almost close to that date as well.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments related to the regular meeting dates? Counselor Penner?
So just to make sure, like, November 6th, I guess we'll be back, depending on RMA. It's usually Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and we'll be back for Thursday?
The conference that year is on 17th to the 20th.
Oh, is it? Oh, sorry. I didn't look that far.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're talking specifically the council, regular meeting dates for council for next year. The suggestion being organizational meeting on October the 28th. All regular council meeting dates on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, exceptions being July, schedule one meeting on the 22nd; August, one meeting on the 26th; in November, schedule the November 12th to replace the 11th, which is a stat holiday; and December, schedule one meeting for December the 9th. Any further discussion, question, or comment related to regular council meeting dates for 2025? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I move to approve the schedule as listed.
Okay, thank you for that. Excuse me. So we have a motion that council approved the scheduling of the 2025 organizational meeting for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and to hold all regular council meeting dates on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, with the exceptions being July, schedule one meeting for July 22nd; August, schedule one meeting for August the 26th; November, schedule a meeting for November the 12th to replace November the 11th; and December, schedule one meeting for December the 9th. Any further discussion, question, or comment related to council meeting dates for 2025? I'm not seeing any, so are we prepared for the question? All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The next item of business would be Committee of the Whole meeting dates for 2025. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Similar to the last item, this is looking to schedule council's regular Committee of the Whole meetings. We are again proposing that they be held every third Tuesday of the month, with no Committee of the Whole meetings during the summer months. So that... We do have a couple of other conflicts that that would create that we're suggesting that we go without, so that's January, March, and November dates conflict with various conferences, mostly Ag Services Board and RMA. The October is scheduled the day after the election, so we're suggesting that we remove that one from the list as well. And looking to hold a Cal meeting on December 2nd, which will be outside the normal rotation. That in place just now to give us another date for budget deliberations. If that schedule is amenable to council, then we'd be looking for somebody to make the recommended motion.
Okay, so we have the suggested Committee of the Whole meeting dates for 2025 with the exceptions and the shuffle. Is there any discussion, question, comment related to Committee of the Whole meeting dates? I'm not seeing any, so I would be looking for a motion to set the dates. So somebody care to make that motion? Counsel... Deputy Reeve McGee?
I move the Committee of Whole meetings to be as scheduled.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that council approved the third Tuesday of every month for Committee of the Whole meetings with the following exceptions: January 21st, March 18th, July 15th, August 19th, October 21st, November 18th, and the December Committee of the Whole meeting to be held on December 2nd. Any further discussion, question, comment related to that motion? So I'm going to ask the question then. All those in favor of the motion? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The next item of business is to schedule Ag Service Board meeting dates for 2025. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
To you, Mr. Reeve. Again, this item similar to the last two is simply scheduling your Ag Service Board meetings. The... We're proposing that they hold their meetings every second month on the second Wednesday of the month. The only month that that doesn't work is November. Councils, if, as per your previous motion, has scheduled a council meeting for that day. And so we're recommending that you meet on November 26th for Ag Services instead, in November.
Okay. Any question regarding when the Ag Service Board meetings will be scheduled for the 2025 calendar year? So the dates would be January 8th, March 12th, May 14th, July 9th, September 10th, and November 26th. Any question, discussion, comment? If not, I would be looking for a motion. Counselor Cunningham?
I'll move the Ag Services Board meetings as scheduled, with the one exception and as listed.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to approve scheduling of the 2025 Agriculture Service Board meetings on the dates listed: January 8th, March 12th, May 14th, July 9th, September 10th, and November 26th, 2025. Any further discussion, question, or comment related to Ag Service Board meeting schedule? Not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, of course, would be Municipal Planning Commission meeting dates for 2025. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Similar to the previous three items, this is again scheduling a recurring meeting, this one being of the Municipal Planning Commission. To date, this one has been held on the fourth Thursday of every month. We're recommending that that pattern continue. If it does, it does raise three conflicts in January, October, and December. And so we're proposing alternate dates for those three months. So looking to hold January on the... The January meeting on the 30th. The October meeting, as we discussed previously, pushed to November 6th, just in respect of the election and that process. And the December meeting to be held on 18th, unless council would like to meet on December 25th.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Hogan. So any discussion, any desire to meet on the 25th? Other than to have a big celebration together and eat some turkey? If there are no comment or discussion related to those dates, I would be looking for a motion to approve as recommended. Counselor Christie?
So moved. All moves recommended.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that council approved the scheduling of the 2025 Municipal Planning Commission meetings on the fourth Thursday of each month, with the exception of the January meeting to be held on January 30th, the October meeting to be held on November the 6th, and the December meeting to be held on December the 18th. Any further discussion, question, comment related to the motion? If not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is 2024-2025 board and committee appointments. And we are going to start with Ag Service Board. And, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I guess the question for council on, as we go through all of the boards and committees that I've got, is how in-depth you want the explanation. The backgrounds are there in the package. Go through... I won't spend a lot of time on that if that's amenable to councils we go through. I'm seeing nods. The Ag Service Board, council has recently changed the composition of this board to decrease the number of councillors on the board and increase the number of members at large. We did advertise for that, for the Member-at-Large vacancy. To date, we've received no applications for that board, so that'll be something that we need to continue. And hopefully, we'll appoint at an upcoming meeting. With that said, there's still the appointments. The current Members-at-Large are still in different lengths of their terms, so there are no appointments that we need to make there. We do, however, need to appoint the councillor positions.
Just a question, Mr. Hogan. When we accepted the recommendation from the Ag Service Board that that automatically extend the term on the Members-at-Large? Because my understanding was they were... One was expiring this year, next year, and the year after. So would we need a motion to extend those terms to the dates that are listed here? My belief was Ms. Barath would have been off this year, but she was willing to extend?
We'll double-check that.
Thank you for that. So I guess, you know, I guess what I would say might be appropriate, I believe that based on the conversation, and again, this is my recollection from the Ag Service Board meeting, is that those members were in agreement that they would extend. And so would it be appropriate for us to make a motion to note the end dates here? Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Hey, Reeve, we've double checked it. Yes, so we would be looking for a motion to extend each of the terms by a year to the ones listed in the RFD.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so I guess the question at this point in time is we know what our current representation is. We will need to appoint three from council and then designate an alternate member as well as a chairman, and then a motion to extend the terms of our members-at-large by one year. So Counselor Penner.
I'd like to sit on Ag Service Board.
Okay. Counselor Christie.
I'd like to stay on the Ag Service Board.
Counselor Phobes.
I would like to stay on the Ag Service Board as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else interested in Ag Service Board or remaining there or?
Do you want to be an alternate?
Okay, Counselor Whitstock, you are willing to be the alternate?
We get to hold the meetings wherever you are, right?
Okay, so we have Counselor Christie, Counselor Penner, and Counselor Phobes who have indicated a desire to serve on Ag Service Board. And Counselor Whitstock has agreed to serve as alternate. So what I would be looking for is a motion that would appoint those councillors to that board. Counselor McGee.
I move that council appoint Wade Christie, Debbie Penner, and Carrie Phobes to the Agriculture Service Board and appoint Jerry Whitstock as an alternate member.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to appoint Counselor Christie, Counselor Penner, Counselor Phobes to the Ag Service Board and appoint Counselor Whitstock as the alternative member. So any discussion, question, comment? Not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's approved unanimously. I would be looking for a motion to appoint a chairman to the Ag Service Board. Counselor Penner.
I would like to appoint Mr. Christie, Counselor Christie, as the chairman.
Counselor Christie, would you be willing to accept that appointment?
I would accept that appointment.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Penner, would you be willing to make that as a motion?
I would. I'd make the motion that a council appoint Counselor Wade Christie as chairman of the Ag Service Board.
All right, is there any further discussion, comment, or question related to the motion that we appoint Counselor Christie as the chairman to the Agriculture Service Board? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And then I guess the last thing I'd be looking for is a motion to extend the term of the existing members of lar at at large, sorry. Ms. Heather Barath, Julia Jensen, and Mr. Alfred Newfeld. To so their terms expire December 31st for Ms. Barath, December 26th for Ms. Jensen, and December 27th for Mr. Newfeld. So we're extending their term by one year. Any, Counselor Christie.
I'd make the motion to extend the term of the current members-at-large of the Agriculture Service Board members for one year.
Okay. All right. So we have that motion to extend the term of the current members-at-large for the Agriculture Service Board for one year. And my understanding from our conversation at Ag Service Board meeting was that they were willing to do that. Is there any further comment, discussion, or question related to the motion? If not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next would be Agricultural Appeal Board. And Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The Agricultural Appeal Board is something the council needs to appoint annually by by legislation. So what we've done in the past number of years is we've utilized a subdivision development appeal board for the same purpose. They're both looking quasi-judicially, looking at appeals that come in. Obviously, different topics, but have training in that area. So that is our that's admin's recommendation to move to continue that process.
Okay, thank you for that. So the recommendation is that we use the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for the Agricultural Appeal Board. Is there any discussion, comment, or question related to that recommendation? If not, I'd be looking for a motion. Counselor Cunningham, please.
I'll move that council utilizes the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for the Agricultural Appeal Board.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have the motion that we utilize the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for the Agricultural Appeal Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. The next one is the Soil Conservation Appeal Board. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Hey, there, Mr. Reeve. Again, type of appeal board. This one differs from the last one, though, in terms of its topic being soil conservation and the recommendation that we utilize the Agriculture Service Board for this function.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion to the recommendation that we use the Agriculture Service Board to serve as the Soil Conservation Act Appeal Board? If there is none, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint the Agriculture Service Board. Counselor Christie.
I'd move that the council approve the Agriculture Service Board as a Soil Conservation Act Appeal Board as per Section 14A of the Soil Conservation Act.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to appoint the Agriculture Service Board as the Soil Conservation Act Appeal Board as per Section 14A of the Provincial Soil Conservation Act. Any discussion, question, comment to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The next appointment is Aqua 7 Regional Water Commission. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Aqua 7 Regional Water Commission is a entity that provides water to several communities, including Neale County. Each year, council appoints a member and an alternate to this commission.
Okay, thank you for that. So we're looking for a person to serve as the member on Aqua 7 and an alternate. Counselor Whitstock has been our member, and Counselor Penner as the alternate. Guess the question would be, are you desiring to continue?
I wouldn't mind staying on as the chair.
Okay.
As the representative, the chair will be decided there.
Yeah. Okay, so Counselor Whitstock is willing to continue to be the appointment alternate?
I would stay, but would someone else like to sit on it? It's I I haven't had to go, but I mean, if you're interested in. No, I'll stay on, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not seeing a lot of councillors campaigning for the alternate position, so we have Counselor Whitstock, who has volunteered, sorry, to serve as our council member, and Counselor Penner as the alternate. Would someone care to make a motion to that? Counselor Cunningham.
I'll move that council appoint Jerry Whitstock to the Aqua 7 Regional Water Commission and Debbie Penner as alternate.
Thank you for that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to appoint Counselor Whitstock to the Aqua 7 Regional Water Commission and Counselor Penner as the alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item is Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you. The Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee is the committee that looks after the governance component of the our regional emergency management systems. Traditionally, this has been the Reeve and Deputy Reeve that have filled these appointments. We're recommending the the same.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a recommendation that the Reeve and Deputy Reeve serve as our appointees to the Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Any discussion? If not, would someone care to make a motion to that effect? Counselor Penner?
I'd make the motion that council appoint the Reeve to the Regional Emergency Advisory Committee and the Deputy Reeve as the alternate.
Thank you for that. So we do have a motion that council appoints the Reeve to the Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee and Deputy Reeve as alternate. Any discussion? I'm asked the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Our next item up for discussion would be the Central Alberta Economic Partnership. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Central Alberta Economic Partnership, or CAPE, is an economic development organization of which Neale County is a member. We have appointed individuals to this in the the past. Currently, current representation is Deputy Reeve McGee and Counselor Cunningham as the alternate. So the up to council as to which direction you want to go there. We would note that Deputy Reeve McGee is a director on that organization. By the policies of that organization, to be a director, you do need to be an appointed member. So we're recommending that Deputy Reeve McGee continue in that role.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
Yeah, and I I reread the the agreement that we made. And so when we do agree to have a director, we agree for the full term of the directors. So I'm not sure how if we need to change how we do this process in the future. But if we ever agree for someone to run as director at CAPE, we have to agree to the three-year term. That means we were always. That does not have to mean, though, that I am the appointed member, so we could have a second person go as the voting member to the AGMs. So what we're voting here is not to be a director, but whether or not you're the representative that goes to the two annual meetings, one in the spring and one in the fall, to represent any voting that the membership does.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Are you saying that you don't want to go as our appointed member?
I'm glad to continue, but just so that we're clear that this is a little bit of a unique way of of how all that policy works for that organization.
Counselor Cunningham.
And I'm happy to stay as alternate.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So we do have Counsel Deputy Reeve McGee, who's willing to continue as our appointee, and Counselor Cunningham, who's willing to serve as an alternate. Would someone care to make a motion to that effect? Counselor Christie.
So moved.
Okay, so we do have a motion to appoint Deputy Reeve McGee to the Central Alberta Economic Partnership Committee and Counselor Cunningham as alternate. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The next item up for discussion is Central Rural Municipalities of Alberta's Zone 2 Director Committee. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The Central Regional, the Central RMA Director Board meeting meets a couple times a year. They're really the the group that comes together and looks at the broader meetings that the Central Zone attends. Traditionally, Neale's appointed the Reeve and Deputy Reeve to these positions, which seems to be the common approach from all the municipal members.
Okay, thank you for that. So I I guess I'm more than willing to continue in that. And traditionally, we've appointed the deputy, so would somebody? Is there any discussion, question, or comment to that? Counselor Penner?
No discussion, but so I will make the motion that council appoint the Reeve to the Central Rural Municipalities of Alberta Director Committee and appoint the Deputy Reeve as the alternate.
Thank you for that. So we do have a motion that council appoint the Reeve to the Central Rural Municipalities of Alberta Director Committee and appoint Deputy Reeve McGee as the alternate. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. Community Futures and Wild Rose. Again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Hey, Mr. Reeve, Community Futures is another part of our economic development. It's another external organization that we're part of as part of our economic development initiatives. Normally, each year, we appoint a we make a we appoint a primary and an alternate to this to this group.
Okay, thank you for that. So traditionally, we appoint a member and an alternate, and to this point, our member has been Counselor Christie. So yes, Counselor Christie.
I'd like to stay on this board. I enjoy it very much, and it we're finally getting some involvement in Neale County, so I really appreciate it.
Okay. Counselor McGee.
I'm happy to stay the alternate.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that council appoint Counselor Christie to the Community Futures Wild Rose Committee and Counselor McGee as the alternate.
Okay, so we have a motion that council appoint Counselor Christie to the Community Futures Wild Rose Committee and Deputy Reeve McGee as the alternate. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Neale Medical Services Retention and Recruitment Committee is the next one. Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. This is the what we commonly refer to as Dr. R and R. One note about this appointment is with the medical with the rent stabilization program that we've put in place, this committee has essentially been put on hiatus for the duration of that that program. So it is it technically still exists. However, it's highly unlikely that it will be required to meet. So there is a we are recommending an appointment to it as just in case, but I think it's unlikely that this committee will will meet during the the term of this appointment.
Okay. All right, so we have a recommendation that we appoint a member and an alternate to the Neale Medical Services Retention and Recruitment Committee, even though they are on pause as long as the rent stabilization program is in place. So thank you for that recommendation. I guess I have been our member to this point. I would be willing to continue to serve on that committee, especially if it's not meeting. And Counselor Whitstock, you've been our alternate. Would you like to continue as that?
Sure, why not?
It's no more meetings.
It's a meeting that never meets.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so if that's the case, I would need someone to make a motion that we do that. Counselor Cunningham.
I'll move that council appoint Kenneth King to the Neale Medical Services Retention and Recruitment Committee and Jerry Whitstock as alternate.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that we appoint myself to the Neale Medical Services Retention and Recruitment Committee and Counselor Whitstock as the alternate. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The next one up is the Police Advisory Committee. And Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Police Advisory Committee is a group of is a group that is the purpose is to advise or provide community input to the RC to the local RC or one of the local RCMP detachments. Normally, we appoint a primary and an alternate to this committee.
Okay. So Counselor Cunningham, you served there previously?
I would be happy to continue serving on that committee.
Good, thank you. Appreciate your willingness to serve on our behalf. And Counselor McGee, you have been the alternate.
I would enjoy staying as alternate.
Okay. All right. So if that's the case, would someone care to make that motion? Counselor Christie.
I make the motion to appoint Laura Lee Cunningham to the Police Advisory Committee and Fay McGee as alternate.
Okay, thank you for that. So I have a motion to appoint Counselor Cunningham to the Police Advisory Committee and Deputy Reeve McGee as the alternate. No, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item up is Drumheller and District Solid Waste Management Association. And Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Drumheller and District Solid Waste Association is the regional group that looks after waste disposal in the area on behalf of a number of municipalities. This is, of course, located in the, in Drumheller. We normally appoint a primary and an alternate to this association.
Okay, thank you for that. So Counselor Penner, you have served on our behalf faithfully and well. Are you willing to continue?
Sure, I'd sit on it again.
Okay. We don't want to waste your talents, but we appreciate your work there. And Deputy Reeve McGee.
Yes, I'm willing to stay as alternate.
Okay, that keeps it simple. So I would need a motion to that effect, that we make those appointments. Counselor Cunningham.
I'll move that council appoint Debbie Penner to the Drumheller and District Solid Waste Management Association and Fay McGee as alternate.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion to appoint Counselor Penner to the Drumheller and District Solid Waste Management Association and Deputy Reeve McGee as the alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next one is Neale Housing Corporation. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Neale Housing Corporation is, we appoint two members to that and an alternate. That is the organization that looks after a number of housing, or looks after a number of seniors accommodation units, the biggest one being Golden Hills Lodge. There are a number of other ones throughout the area. And each municipality that's a member appoints individuals, appoints elected officials to that board. So again, that's, we have two appointments plus an alternate that, that's within our right to make.
Okay, thank you for that. So Counselor Phobes and Counselor Cunningham, you have been our appointees in the past. So what's your thoughts? Counselor Phobes?
I wouldn't mind staying on.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
I, I would like to stay on. There's definitely been some challenges in the last couple of years, as you are all aware, but I think we've made some headway, so I would just like to see it through for the, for the last year.
Okay, thank you for that. Certainly, we have appreciated the work that both of you have done with Neale Housing. Our alternate has been Deputy Reeve McGee. Are you?
Sure, I'd like that role.
You like the alternate role?
It seems to really fit me.
Okay. All right, if that's the case, unless someone's really desirous of being there, I'd look for a motion to appoint. Counselor Penner?
I'd make the motion that council appoint Laura Lee Cunningham and Carrie Phobes to the Neale Housing Corporation and Fay McGee as the alternate.
Okay, so we have a motion that we appoint Counselor Cunningham and Counselor Phobes to the Neale Housing Corporation and Deputy Reeve McGee as the alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next one up is Neale Regional Family and Community Support Services Board. And Mr. Hogan.
Thank you. The, we're part of a regional FCS system. The, under that, under the founding, under the agreement that has just been updated with that, we are making, we make an appointment to that regional board. And we're suggesting that, that council do that.
Okay, thank you for that. I have served in that position for a while, and I'm willing to continue. If that's council's wish. And Counselor McGee.
I'm passionate about this group. I would really like being part of it. Thank you.
Okay. So unless someone else is really wanting, I'm quite happy to continue. So I would need a motion. Counselor Christie.
Make the motion to. Make the motion to appoint Kenneth King to the Neale Regional Family Community Support Service Board and Fay McGee as an alternate.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to appoint myself to the Neale Regional Family and Community Support Services Board and Deputy Reeve McGee as the alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next one up is the Neale Regional Partnership. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Neale Regional Partnership is a partnership between the regional municipalities that looks at, that explores different shared services or joint programs and provides joint training to the municipalities. We generally appoint a primary and an alternate to this group.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, Deputy Reeve McGee.
Yes, I, I really enjoy being on this group, so I'd like to continue.
All right. Counselor Christie, you've been the alternate?
I would stay as alternate because it's, no, they don't need me very often. I like it.
Counselor Penner?
I'm not putting my name forward. I'm going to make a motion. I want to thank both of you because I think this has been very valuable, this regional partnership. So I'd make the motion that council appoint Fay McGee to the Neale Regional Partnership Committee and Wade Christie as the alternate.
Thank you for that. So we do have a motion to appoint Deputy Reeve McGee to the Neale Regional Partnership Committee and Counselor Christie as the alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Next up is the Marigold Library System. And Mr. Hogan, again, if you would, please.
Thank you. The Marigold Library System is a regional library system which Neale County is a part. Each year, we appoint a primary and an alternate to this organization.
All right, Counselor Phobes, you have been our representative on that board. Are you willing to continue or?
Um, not at this time. I had a hard time this year being able to attend. I'm super grateful to Deputy Reeve McGee for stepping in. So I would become the alternate. I can't, I don't have the time, honestly, on weekends is my problem.
Okay, thank you for that. You're willing to stand as the alternate, you said? Okay. Is there someone willing to be our appointee on the Marigold Library System Board? Counselor, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'm, I'm willing to take that back. Yeah, I was there a couple of years ago, and I really enjoyed it then, so I don't mind going back.
Okay. All right. So I would need a motion to that effect. Counselor Cunningham.
I'll move that council appoint Deputy Reeve McGee to the Marigold Library System Board and Counselor Phobes as alternate.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion that Deputy Reeve McGee be our appointee to the Marigold Library System Board and Counselor Phobes will serve as alternate. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Next up is Municipal Planning Commission. And Mr. Hogan, again, if you would, please.
Okay. The Municipal Planning Commission is a county commission that deals with various planning elements. The, in the past, under that legislation, the members of council are typically appointed as members of the Municipal Planning Commission. Council has the option of appointing one, two, or no members at large. In advertising, members at large applications were received from Rick Vickery and Amy Merrill.
Okay, thank you for that. So our current format is it's council, and then it's, we have had members at large, and we've had people willing to serve, Mr. Rick Vickery and Ms. Amy Merrill. So what we would need is a number of motions, the first being that we appoint all members of council to the Municipal Planning Commission as per our own bylaw, seventeen eighty-four. Counselor Penner?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to appoint all members of council to the Municipal Planning Commission as per bylaw seventeen eighty-four. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The next item up would be to appoint a chairperson. And Counselor Whitstock, you have been serving as chair on the Municipal Planning Commission. Would you want to continue in that role?
I would. Yeah, I wouldn't have any problems staying there, but if somebody else wants to, it's.
You've done a good job for us there, so. So somebody want to make a motion? Counselor Christie.
So moved. I'll move to appoint Jerry Whitstock as chairman of the Municipal Planning Commission.
All right, thank you for that. So we have a motion to approve Counselor Whitstock as the chairperson to the Municipal Planning Commission. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item would be to appoint a vice chair to the Municipal Planning Commission. And Deputy Reeve McGee, you currently are serving in that position. Would you be willing to continue?
Correction, you've been serving in that position. Yes, I was, I was that position a couple of terms ago, but this term was you. I'm willing, if you're not wanting to.
In, in the request for decision, it says you are the vice chair, so.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry. No.
I, I have no idea how that would have happened.
Yep, so I defer to you. If you prefer to be there, that's great. If not, I'm, I would welcome the position.
I don't mind. I, I mean, I don't get to do it very often because Counselor Whitstock is always on the bit. So, I mean, I'm willing to.
That's good.
Okay.
Keep it that way.
All right. So then we'd need a motion to that effect. Counselor Penner?
I'd make the motion that we appoint, where are we here? So Reeve King as the vice chairman of the Municipal Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you for that motion. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next motion we would need is to appoint our members at large. And I think both Ms. Merrill and Mr. Vickery have been very beneficial additions to our Municipal Planning Commission. So I think I personally would be very happy to have them join us again. And we would need a motion to that effect. Counselor Cunningham.
I just want to say thank you to both of them because they do, both of them do an excellent job. So with that, I'll make the motion that council appoint Rick Vickery and Amy Merrill as members at large to the Municipal Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you for that motion. And yeah, as members of council, we're very appreciative of all those who serve as members at large on whatever committee, and their input is valuable. So, so we have a motion that we appoint Rick Vickery and Amy Merrill as members at large to our Municipal Planning Commission. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Next up is Red Deer River Municipal Users Group. And Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Okay, the Red Deer River Municipal Users Group, or RDAR-MOG, is one of the groups that combines, has representation of a number of rural and urban municipalities, and deals with water use on the Red Deer River. Normally, we appoint a primary and an alternate to this organization.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Whitstock, you have been our appointee. Are you willing to continue?
Yeah, I would, I would like to stay there.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor McGee, you've served as alternate?
Yes, and I have yet to attend a meeting, so, so that's an easy yes.
All right, so I, I hear a certain amount of willingness in that. So I would need a motion to that effect, to appoint Counselor Christie.
I'd make the motion to appoint Jerry Whitstock to the Red Deer River Municipal User Group and Fay McGee as the alternate.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to appoint Counselor Whitstock to the Red Deer River Municipal Users Group. And Deputy Reeve McGee as alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Next up is Subdivision and Development Appeal Board. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The Subdivision Development Appeal Board is the board that deals with development appeals, as well as a couple of other appeals as per council appointment. The, we have, this is solely comprised of members at large. There's a list contained in the RFD, and we're recommending that council appoint, or make appointments for a one-year term.
Okay, thank you for that. So I see in the RFD that we've had applicants from five, and we have one who's served on our board who didn't submit an application, and we're recommending that we appoint. I'm just getting it straight in my head. Okay, so we're going to point the five that have applied, correct? Okay, all right. Any discussion related to the motion? Or the appointment? If you, one did not. So the motion would be that we appoint Mr. Day, Ms. Fraser, Ms. Campion, Mr. Park, and Ms. Scott. Any discussion? If not, would someone care to make a motion that we appoint the five members to subdivision? Counselor, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I move that we appoint the following members at large to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for one term, one-year term. Dennis Day, Connie Fraser, Laurie Campion, Robert Park, Jenny Scott.
Okay, thank you for that. Any discussion to the motion that we appoint Dennis Day, Connie Fraser, Laurie Campion, Robert Park, and Jenny Scott to our, as members of large to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for one year? Deputy Reeve McGee.
And I was amiss to say, I really do appreciate the applicants coming forward. We really need you, and, and it's great to have you back.
Counselor Penner?
But also to say thank you to Mr. Cullen for serving for multiple years, and we do really appreciate him being able to do that in the past.
Thank you. Again, yeah, it's good to note that all those who have volunteered to help and/or submitted applications to serve is greatly appreciated. So, so we do have a motion that we appoint those five members. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Next up would be Troschu Housing Corporation. And Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
The Troschu Housing Corporation is the entity that is overseeing the construction, actually overseeing the construction and management of the seniors facility that is being built in Troschu. By virtue of backing the, or providing that loan guarantee, the county was given this representation on that board. So we have in the past appointed a primary and an alternate to this organization.
Okay, thank you. To this point, I have served as council's appointee on the board, and I am more than willing to continue doing that. And Counselor Christie, you have served as the alternate.
Yeah, I, I enjoy sitting as, as a spectator on that board, but I appreciate the information that I've gained from it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So we would need a motion unless somebody else really is desirous of joining us on that committee, to appoint myself and Counselor Christie. Counselor Cunningham.
I'll move that council appoints Kenneth King to the Troschu Housing Corporation Committee and Wade Christie as an alternate.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to appoint myself to the Troschu Housing Corporation Committee and Counselor Christie as the alternate. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. And believe it or not, we are getting close to the end. The next item up is the intermunicipal collaboration framework committees. And Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. This item and the next one are similar in nature. Council takes part in, legislatively, council must take part in the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks and the development of those and other agreements. The council has made appointments to these for the term of council. So unless you're looking at changes, there's actually nothing that you need to do for this. So unless you're looking at changes, there's actually nothing that you need to do for this item or for the intermunicipal development plan ones. Uh, those appointments are still in place until the end of your term. So if you're not looking to change those, we're recommending you accept for information. If you are looking to change up the representation, that is of course within council's domain to do.
So basically what we did is we set these up to the end of the term, correct?
Correct.
All right. So the only ones where, I don't think we have any conflicts or any problems with any of them unless somebody's wanting to be changed out. If not, I would be looking then for a motion to receive for information. The collaboration framework report. Anyone?
So everyone is happy where they sit and okay, they're smiling. Um, so I'd make the motion that council receive for information intermunicipal collaboration framework committee report.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to receive for information, the intermunicipal collaboration framework committee report. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item is like the first one, intermunicipal development plan committee. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would please.
Through Mr. Reeve, identical to the last item, these appointments are for a term. Uh, if council wishes to change them, you may. Uh, if not, then we're looking, we recommend you just receive for information. These are regarding the intermunicipal development plans.
Okay, so the suggestion is we don't change anything and that we just, again, make a motion to receive for information. So as long as everyone's, um, content with the committee on which they're sitting, there's no need for change here, so. Counselor Whitstock.
I was just looking at him. I'd like to sit on the ACME one and the Linden one, um, the IDPs.
Okay, so, um, that, that would be a change in appointment then. Um, so Deputy, um, Counselor Penner and Deputy Reeve McGee, you have been serving as the council members and the alternates. Would one of you consider a change there?
Go, take it.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay on as, I'll go as the alternate, sorry.
Okay, all right, so on the ACME committee, what we would be doing is putting Counselor Whitstock as our council member and the same on, sorry, the Linden one. Um, the Linden one, again, has the same two alternates.
Sorry, I'm on ICF, I, okay, now I'm right, yep.
So we're going to, um, what we're suggesting is we're appointing Counselor Whitstock to be the council member and then Counselor Penner would be the alternate.
Thank you.
So then we would, um, need a, a motion to appoint, um, Counselor Whitstock to the ACME Neahill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and to the Linden. Okay, so we'll make a separate motion for each of them? All right. So if somebody wanted to make that motion that we appoint, um, the following members to the, um, ACME Neahill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee. Counsel, Deputy Reeve McGee.
Uh, I'd like to move that council appoint the following to ACME Ne- Neahill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee. We would like to have the Reeve, Jerry Whitstock, and our alternate Debbie Penner.
Okay, so we have the motion that we change the constitution of that committee to being the Reeve, Counselor Whitstock with the alternate Counselor Penner. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, I guess. We've lost Counselor Phobes. All right, and then, uh, we would need a similar motion to appoint the same members to the Linden Neahill County.
No.
Oh, you're back. Welcome back, Gary. We lost you there for a second. Counselor Christie.
I'd make the motion to appoint the following to the Linden Neahill County Intermunicipal, Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee Reeve, Jerry Whitstock, and alternate Debbie Penner.
Okay, so we have that motion to change that committee as well, uh, to appoint Counselor Whitstock as our council member and Counselor Penner as the alternate. Any discussion to that? If not, all those in, oops, sorry, Counselor Phobes, sorry.
So, um, just because I didn't sit on the original ones or Laura Lee for the, sorry, Counselor Cunningham for that fact. I'm just wondering why, um, one of us couldn't be as the alternate so we can at least learn what you guys all know.
Um, okay, uh.
Someone can just clarify that for me? It would be great.
Hey, no problem. Um, I'm just looking through the cons, the, the different committees. And I see that you are some of the council members, uh, Counselor Phobes, you are on some of them and Counselor Cunningham is on the Three Hills, Neahill one as members, not as alternates. Um, do you want, uh?
Well, I would like to either stay on the ACME or the Linden one, please.
She got them mixed up.
Um, I think you're looking, you must be looking at the ICF ones, not the IDP, uh, Counselor Phobes, because, uh, just let me have a quick look back.
Sorry, I just got to get back in.
Yeah, you, okay. Um, we didn't change the, uh, composition of the ICF committees, so you still are on the Linden one.
Okay.
And, um, yeah, we kind of lost you on the feed when we were having that conversation, so we didn't change the ICF one at all. What we are changing would be the ACME and Linden Intermunicipal Development Plan, so the IDP committees. And all we've shifted is, uh, Deputy Reeve McGee has gone off as the alternate. Counselor Whitstock has gone on as the member and Counselor Penner has gone on as the alternate. So the committees, IDP ones that you were on and ICF ones that you were on, you still are appointed members, uh, of council. Does that answer your question or not?
Bumping her out of Linden though.
No, no, we haven't. ICFs and IDPs, they're different. Counselor Phobes, I'm looking for confirmation. Does that answer your question?
Go ahead.
Are you wanting to serve on one of those IDPs as an alternate?
No, it's fine.
Like, I think as council, we'd be willing to consider that if you'd like to do that. Like Counselor Penner is nodding her head to say if you would like to be on the Linden one as the alternate, she'd be more than willing to allow that to happen. Counselor Penner, go ahead.
That's correct, and, and we have to realize we haven't been together, so it's not like we're missing out on anything. We're just starting this process over again here, so, um, you haven't missed anything, but if, if that's something that you would like to, to do, um, on the Linden, um, IDP, you're more than welcome.
So Counselor Phobes, would you like to take that alternate position on the Linden IDP committee?
If I could, yes, please.
Okay. I think I hear willingness on both sides, yourself and Counselor Penner, so. All right, so, um, we would change that motion. Uh, Counselor Christie, that's a, um, amendment to your motion. Uh, are you willing to, um, alter that?
Sure, sounds good to me.
Okay. So Counselor Phobes, um, the motion now reads that council appoint the following to the Linden Neahill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee. Uh, myself as Reeve, uh, Counselor Whitstock as the council member and yourself, Counselor Phobes, as the alternate. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And, um, just, can I, uh, beg the indulgence of council and Counselor Phobes, I'm just going to go backwards in the agenda. Um, just to clarify, the intermunicipal collaboration framework committees. Um, when we dropped and lost you there, we had made the motion that, um, we just received that list for information, so that means that there was no changes made to the intermunicipal collaboration framework committees. So any of those committees that you were appointed to either as a member or as an alternate, you still are on those committees. Okay? And we just received that report for information. All right, any further discussion, question, or comment related to, uh, the organizational meeting? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I am going to, oh, Counselor Penner, go ahead.
I guess as a council, um, we should have a little discussion here. As an alternate, you are more than welcome to attend these meetings. You just, you're sitting quietly is pretty much what you're doing, so any, any of these, this is how I interpret it, so I want your feedback. That if you are an alternate on any committee here, um, you are more than welcome to attend and it doesn't hurt periodically to stop in just to, um, see how things work. So I'd like to hear from the rest of council on that thought.
I think that's the understanding, um, that we have as council, that if you are appointed as an alternate, you can attend those meetings. Just not as a voting member, uh, and then if you go as a replacement for the member, then you are considered voting. Any other comment? Counselor Christie.
I know on Troshe Housing, I'm allowed to comment but not vote, so you still get to have that point of view and I appreciate being involved with it, so. And the other groups that I'm on, if I have time, I go to those meetings.
I'm not going to say I'm like a marionette, you know, with Wade directing me, but I very much appreciate Wade's presence there because he brings some wisdom, so that's good. All right, any further clarification? Mr. Hogan.
Uh, just to, to that point that was made, uh, generally that's the case. A lot of the external organizations will set up that relationship or make that known. So some of them might have slightly different operating, operating mechanisms that they attach, so some of them, as Counselor Christie said, the alternate is allowed to participate but not vote. There are other ones that are established that the alternate is there really as an observer. Um, they, they get to be a wallflower, but they're not participating or voting, so, so the, the external ones, it does, there are nuances there, but in general, yeah.
Okay, and Counselor Cunningham.
And I guess, um, without looking at our council compensation, like if you're going just as an observer, you wouldn't be compensated for that. If you're going to fill in for somebody, then you are eligible for that, would be my understanding.
Mr. Hogan.
Uh, through Mr. Reeve, that, uh, the answer that Counsel Cunningham had, I'd actually like to go back and review the, uh, the compensation policy. Um, I'd have to, my recollection is I don't know if that is explicitly covered under there, so I would need to double check that before giving an answer.
Counselor Penner.
I'm just going to add to that conversation. I have no problems in paying for that to attend because, like, it's very valuable information so that you don't go in blindly to a meeting and all of a sudden somebody's sick. So it's such a small amount, um, I, I am in favor of paying the alternate.
Thank you for that. And like we said, Mr. Hogan, we need some clarification from our own policy as relates to how that would be dealt with. Okay, if there are no other items of discussion or question, we are adjourned from the organizational meeting at ten oh one. And what we're going to do is we are going to take a recess. Um, we'll be back at, uh, ten fifteen for our regular council, scheduled council meeting, so ten fifteen, we are in recess till then.